Boo.
Boo hoo.
I hope this goes by quickly.
I know. I know, I just uh marked everything up.
Yeah, yeah. You got more crap going on than I want to deal with. Where this too shall pass.
It will, absolutely.
Oh, it does. It's just like at the time, it's like, I just want to get it off my plate. Like right now. I've been on this stupid queue. For my upstate fishing with Julie. We go upstate, we have to get these passes. And you have to jump on at five thirty, you get your queue, they start selling at six. Right now, I'm number eight. I've been waiting two hours, what are five thirty? So, yeah, hour and a half. Just look at this and go round and round. And if you miss it, you're screwed.
And you're number eight.
Now I'm number eight. Yeah, I was forty three.
Alright.
My buddy Troy, the guide up there, he was ninety one, another friend was seventy seven. And another guy I know, he was sixty one. So I was doing the best out of all of us, but. So, just the most ridiculous thing. You know, you tell them, why don't you do it like September first? Do that way. Then do the second, now they do the entire month or whatever, one shot, you got. I don't know, a couple thousand people probably vying for limited numbers. It's. Painful, stressful, very stressful.
Sounds it, oh my goodness.
Imagine missing it. You know, there goes a twelve year tradition thrown out of tubes. Oh.
Yep.
I got it, I got it.
Oh my goodness.
Yeah. Fun, fun. So what do you, is someone else on call? So what do you?
Nobody yet.
Our meeting today, the uh.
Yeah, I like I said, I need to play with it. I I don't think it's bad. I just need to physically get my hands on it to know what goes where. And how to use it to our advantage.
Yeah, because there's a lot of loose ends that need to be put in the right spots.
There are a lot of loose ends, and I would love to be able to use it also as like. A digital file.
Yeah, exactly. Like they're saying, old history and stuff. Okay, so that's a great jumping off point, because now eventually scanned. History's done.
And history's done, exactly. And like, like you said, any like notices of decision, any public hearing notice, anything related to. Yeah, it should, I copy the meeting, it should go right into the file, so you know this was done.
Yeah, pass, here's the motion. Done.
Yeah, it's done.
But see, that's why, uh, not to say anything about April, but she took it, took the ball running without knowing what she's running with.
Yes.
Should have been more communications amongst us, but, you know, hey. It'll come around. It's no big deal, but it's.
It it will come around, absolutely.
It would have been a little smoother if we had more input to say, like the pay thing, you look at that, at the end, pay. No, put that when the application submitted.
Because that actually triggers if the application is also.
You can't accept the application, it's incomplete if they don't pay.
Yep.
You know, it's just little, little things.
Little things like that, exactly.
Yeah, which, it'll be fine.
It'll be, it'll be fine.
Yeah. Prevention. And then they'll change it. Then they'll find one that actually does do the job, but.
Well, I mean, I, last week at the zoning meeting when Glenn was speaking. How he said, like, you know, there's certain things that have to be in the applications. And it's like, oh.
Yeah.
And so, I mean, I started looking at that a little, and and so, yeah, certain things need to be. In every application, basically, that, you know, they can appeal to ZBA and. But I didn't really do a deep dive into it, but it sounds to me like that stuff they should be acknowledging.
At least reference to, you know, footnote.
A reference to, yes.
The right to this, because a lot of times when I do um. NOVs, I was telling you, you have the right to an appeal, blah, 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 blah. It would be nice if it was already incorporated.
And I believe it, and it has to be incorporated.
Yeah, so we're, so our rigs, you think our rigs suck, look at Bridgewater's.
Oh. Well, I got, I. I got people to admit now, so let me get Russ in here.
He's early.
Yeah, he is. Kathy's here, and so is Melanie. No.
Oh, he's. He's in the queue. He's in the queue.
I know, but he'll pop in, he'll.
Number five. There he is.
Let me get. Melanie got bounced, I have to hit her again. There we go.
Hey, could you hear me?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Hey, Russ, we can hear you.
Welcome, Chris.
Chris, you don't have a mic yet.
There. There. How's everyone doing?
Good, good. Got more wood today. Burning fires like a madman. Hi, Kathy.
Hi, Russ. So I sent you an email, just awareness that I I apologize that I have a work conflict.
I got it. We we might be done by then.
But I I have to leave at seven thirty. I think you misread my email. So in thirty minutes?
Yeah.
You think you'll be done in thirty minutes? Okay.
Yeah, there's not much. I don't think there's much on the agenda.
Okay, okay. I I'll call back if my meeting ends early, but otherwise, um, apologize.
No problem. Hi, Melanie. Thanks for joining.
How's it going, Russ?
Good. Let me text Sierra.
Are you expecting um John and Rob?
I'm expecting Rob. John has COVID.
Oh, no. Sierra's joining right now.
And uh Sue has to work.
Oh, boy, okay.
No, no, no barks, seriously. Uh-uh, we're not talking, no. Good boy. Here we go. And Rob is joining right now. You see. There you go. Hey, Sierra, you want to try your microphone?
Yeah, it works.
Yep, okay, good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Hello. Okay. I think we're, is it seven o'clock? Yeah?
It's, yep, seven oh one.
All right, well, welcome, everybody, to the regular, actually, this is a special meeting. Of the Roxbury Inland Wetlands and Water Courses Commission. For Tuesday, January twenty third, twenty twenty four. It's a special meeting. Because it wasn't posted. Because we haven't set our uh schedule for twenty twenty four. That's the only reason why. And special meetings mean we can't add anything to the agenda. Um, I I want to share some good news. Uh. The Katz family uh has donated twenty six acres of land to the Land Trust. Uh, that is the woods that's across the street. One of, there's two lots across the street, if you remember. Uh, well, one of them just got donated to the Land Trust. Which is great news, because it expands Battle Swamp uh Preserve. And and hopefully, we keep keep pushing and try to connect the Moosehorn Preserve. So there's a way to walk from Painter Hill Road down to the river. Wouldn't that be cool? So just wanted to share that news.
Did you say that was the Katz family?
Pardon?
Did you say that was the Katz family?
Yes.
Oh, cool. Alright, thanks.
Okay, so seating of members, who wants to begin?
Rob Horgan.
Kathy, you want, go ahead.
Oh, Kathy Ross.
Sierra Gorgleone.
Melanie Jalen.
That's it, right?
And you, Russ, that's it.
And we, so we do have a quorum, and I will seat um Kathy for Sue. And I'll seat Melanie for John. So we have a full commission.
And and how many for a quorum, Russ?
Pardon?
How how many for a quorum?
There's three we need, and we have five.
Okay, thanks.
Election of Wetland Commission Officers for twenty twenty four. Are there any nominations for chairman? And please, feel free.
I I would like to nominate Russ Dorenzo for chairman.
Thanks, Rob.
I second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any other nominations for chairman? You sure now? Okay, haven't heard none. We'll move on to the vote. Uh. Uh, how many people vote for me for chairman for twenty twenty four?
Aye.
Aye.
Say aye, yeah.
Aye.
Aye.
And I'm staying, so I guess I get the privilege, and it is a privilege to be the chairman of this commission for another year. Hopefully more. Um, we have a long way to go in this town. Uh, nominations for vice chairman, I'll nominate to keep Sue Fitch on as vice chairman.
Does she? Yeah, I. I. I I just didn't know if she had to be here to, or she's expressed in advance or anything like that.
Well, she wasn't the last time.
That's right.
I remember that, Rob. So she was better. So we'll take her silence as acceptance, right?
Right. Any other nominations for vice chairman? Haven't heard nom, I'll nominate, uh, I'll. On the floor for uh to vote for Sue as vice chairman. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Sue is the vice chairman once again. Um. Approval of the Wetlands Commission meeting schedule for twenty twenty four. It's the fourth Tuesday of the month at seven PM. But Julie, is there any mess ups in Christmas or Thanksgiving? That's usually where it might change.
Um, actually, Board of Finances, they usually meet the third um Tuesday. And they actually moved theirs up in December. To the second Tuesday, so they're letting you have the uh third Tuesday in December. That's the only deviation. Because we know you guys don't like to meet the week of Christmas, but if you don't have to meet in December. It would be nice to do business in November for next year.
All in favor of the schedule for twenty twenty four, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Those are their meetings. So it's after Thanksgiving, good. Okay, we move on.
Okay. Um, we're going to Stoneledge Sam, actually, meeting minutes first. From November twenty eighth.
I'll look for a motion of approval of the minutes from November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
I make a motion to, oh, yeah, I I'm seated, that's right. I make a motion to approve the uh minutes for November twenty eighth, twenty twenty three.
Do I have a second? Sierra, you're on mute.
Yeah, I am unmute. Did you need me?
Yeah, do I have a second? I thought I saw you.
Oh, I'm sorry, second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye.
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 Here, yeah.
All right, we're going to Stoneledge Sam, and they have asked for another extension. Uh, for their pump house, and they've asked for another continuation. We got a request in on the eighteenth.
Well, what 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 day are we on? Are we, is this the second extension? So.
It is a second extension.
This is the only one they get. You you can't extend it. The most is um. A hundred thirty days and an exten- extension, a hundred thirty days.
Well, they had only asked for thirty days the last time, and that was their first extension in December.
Okay, so we'll we'll have to make a um decision at the next meeting. I'll talk to Paul to make sure he knows that. Because we can't give him another extension after that meeting. Um, that this is for a pump house, and if you remember, there's uh eight wells, and the proposal is to. Uh, build a new pump house with new equipment to allow enough water to be pumped up to forty eight thousand gallons a day. Uh, we required that they hire a hydrologist to evaluate how much water's in the aquifer. Um, we, we, they couldn't find one, so I I found one for him. His name's Sam Haydock from BL Companies. Sam and I worked a lot of years together uh before we parted ways, and. He he's uh, he comes highly regarded by the industry. Uh, Rob and I met with Sam and Paul Shimansky at the site to look at everything, and um. It was beautiful up there that day with the snow and the cold and garnet out of ball. Um. And and I'm happy to report the deer fence isn't that ugly. It's kind of a nice fence uh made of pine poles, so. That was good. So what we told Sam is. Uh, we're we're looking for him to tell us how much ac- water the aquifer can produce, and most importantly. What impact it may have on the stream, which is nearby, and on the wetland, because the wetland. Uh, is created by water coming out of the side of the hill, which I'm sure it's coming out of the rock. And and area wells. So Sam will be putting that together, and we'll be at the next meeting. So uh, I I'll make a motion to approve the extension request.
Could I ask a question, Russ?
Sure.
You 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 made reference to um forty eight thousand gallons?
A day, yeah.
I I didn't see that anywhere. I know they they said fifty thousand, then they said it was just under. Is it truly forty eight? Are we that clear on the on the number?
Yeah, there there's uh, what it was, it robbed, five tanks up there?
I I think that's what they said, but I I thought I only saw four, but maybe there were five.
I think the diagram has five that they, that's in this, in this, in the meeting.
And they were all slightly under ten uh ten thousand gallons.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
I think, I I think that's by design to avoid the. Um, having to go to the state.
Yeah, a- and so, Russ, remember, we talked about like, what would the state require, and there was kind of like three things that that the state requires? Are they? Are we requiring those same things?
We we can't, we can't do it. It's a state permit, but we can't, I did, we did tell Sam. To treat it as if it was a state permit. Uh, all all the same things the state would require than we would require.
Okay, so like, um, you know, that they put it in a public newspaper and such, and post it so that there's awareness?
Well, we can't, we can't do that, because they're not going for a permit. If if. I I guess, I guess we missed our opportunity to have a public hearing, because we would have had a call that. Um. In the first meeting.
I I don't know about that, Russ. If, I I think we still can. If we deem it.
I I forget. I I know there's a limit as the, I think it's sixty five days, which would have been the last meeting. But I I I would have to ask Gail, if we granted an extension, do we still have a right to call for a public hearing?
I I would think we would. And I, you know, ha- have that right.
I don't know if we should rescind our. Our uh request for extension. Uh, I think, you know, he might be better off withdrawing this. And resubmitting it when he has the information, and and I will let Paul know that. I. I think that's a better idea, because. You know, when all that data comes in next meeting, and that's the deadline, um, that gives us no opportunity to request additional information.
Russ, can I jump in? Spencer. Um. Because this was published through the inwa- inland wetlands, and it is public comment, I mean. Anybody that would be concerned had an opportunity to come to these meetings. Um, and request additional information. I mean, these are published. Agendas. Um. I mean, we're, we'll be happy to discuss it with the hydrology report next, next meeting as well, but. Well, at least there was some public notification going on.
No, I I agree, Spencer, but. And and I guess we can't really deem it a significant activity until we have that information from from the hydrologist. Um, but I think, Spencer, it'd be better to withdraw this, because here's, here's the situation we all could be put in. If next meeting, um, M- Mr. Haydock presents. His information, and we want more information, we can't allow an extension. It would force us to deny the application without prejudice, so that it gets, so that. It would be denied, but it would give the opportunity to submit it again. We we could go that route. If if your client and uh your your company prefers that route. Um, then, you know, we could meet next meeting and see how it goes. You know, one question Sam had was, do you want pump tests and and aquifer testing? And the the answer was, well, first do your preliminary overview study. You know, to to see if that's even needed. Um, if if I knew there, we were going to be, our backs were going to be put up against the wall, because I forgot we gave them an extension. I would have told them, yes, go, do the aquifer test. Because we have to prove to people that. I I I don't believe wells could be impacted in any way, shape, or form by this.
This is a very large property.
In the wetlands. Pardon?
It's a very large property. Um, you know, if if this was a an actual subdivision, you'd have how many wells for homes? You know, withdrawing the same amount of water. But I I I definitely feel comfortable.
May I make a comment on that?
Yeah, go ahead, Rob.
So, so typically, a four person home, you know, a a husband, wife, two kids, uses two hundred and fifty gallons of water a day. So if you, if those wells, if the output of the eight or nine wells is twelve thousand gallons per day. That's equivalent to like a forty lot subdivision. In water.
I don't have the acreage of the the property, but I mean, it's it's a significant acre, I mean, thirty thirty acres, I would assume at least.
No, but it's a huge amount, it's a huge amount of water to be drawn. You know, forty eight thousand per day. So, you know, if you divide forty eight thousand by two hundred and fifty, how many homes is that?
Well, I mean, the the health department does uh say that typical four bedroom home is. Uh, what's that, six hundred gallons per day? Is what it's designed at. And, you know, the the health code basically says one acre. A one acre lot is acceptable for a septic and a well, so if you're looking at on on that basis, you know. You could fit thirty homes on this property or whatever it is.
Right.
I'm not trying to argue with you, Rob. I'm I'm happy, just, I think the best way. To do it is, um, in my opinion, just, let's see what the hydrologist says. And at the next meeting, if it is decided the best option is to withdraw it, then that's, that's what we can do.
Great, great. Because Spencer, there's a different situation here than a subdivision. And that is, this aquifer doesn't produce a lot of water. That's the difference. If it was a high production aquifer. Uh, with, I I don't think we could have a problem with it, but it's not, and that's why they have as many wells as they have. Not because they like drilling wells, but in order to supply the house with water that was there, they had to have that many wells. So now, your client is asking to draw a lot more, well, they can't draw more water than what those wells produce. So your client is asking to store the water. And what we're saying is, we need to be sure that the stream. Uh, and and the wetlands are not going to be impacted by that, and and the the hydrologist understands that.
Yep.
And I'm sure if he does his initial evaluation and he feels aquifer tests are 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 needed. He's going to let you know that, and you're going to have to say, look, we can't get that done by the next meeting, we'll we'll withdraw. So let's see where it goes.
Sounds great.
And could I just, could I just ask, so we talk about the wells, but there's also a pump house, right? So the intent of the pump house is what? To.
Distribute the water.
Right.
To distribute the, is, so how deep is the actual pump?
The the wells are deep, they're five hundred feet deep. They have to be, because there's not much water being given up, which is common in Roxbury. On the tops of hills, we know that uh, what's it, Raven Rock is on the top of a hill, they have a thousand foot well. And they're getting two gallons a minute out of it.
Yeah, so.
And they have to truck water in uh. From pool companies to to supply their landscaping. Because even if they put in eight wells, they wouldn't be able to gen- generate enough water to take care of the landscape, and that's going on up there.
Okay, so you've got your ten wells at at such said, or I'm sorry, your five. Your five tanks at at such depth, and then the pump is strictly to pump it up into. The various areas that that need the water in in this garden, right? It's, is that, is that it?
The pump house is full of electronics. It it's controlling the different pumps and and all that, and they want to upgrade that and have a a bigger pump house. Which they showed us, and we didn't really have a problem with it. It is near the stream, but it's on a flat portion. Um, a- and and it, it, there's no real runoff coming off a building that small. It's not that. The runoff isn't that great where we have concern about it.
Hmm.
Concern is, can the aquifer handle what they, what they want to do?
So it's existing, the pump house, and they're just upgrading it? Is that what you're saying?
Spencer, correct me if I'm wrong, that's correct, right? I mean.
Yeah, there's an existing, there's two existing uh water tanks right now, cisterns, and um. And a smaller pump house. So yes, they'd like to add the additional storage tanks. And then have a new uh pump house that will have all the electronics in it and. Um, everything else to pump it to throughout the irrigation and the main house and and all that stuff.
Spencer, so that the the existing pump house and the cisterns are being taken down, and then a new one's being built, right?
Correct.
Yeah.
In the same location.
Right, right.
Yep.
Any more questions for the applicant? I'm sorry, Spencer, I didn't notice you were here, but hi.
No, no worries.
In the area. I didn't know Paul was going to send, send us eighteen in.
Is that what it is? Yeah, thank you, you're too kind.
So. So I I just, so the purpose of these underground storages for irrigation, but also for fire protection, from what I understand?
Yeah.
So is there uh like a proposed hydrant, you know, somewhere, or how would this? Uh, you know, how would this? Uh, you know, how would this integrate into the fire, fire department when they come up?
I do not have an answer for that, but I will, uh, look into that, see if there's some kind of hydrant connection.
Any other questions? Okay, tha- thank you, Spencer. We'll see you in February.
Yeah.
Excuse me, Russ. Um, just clarification. So going back to the motion, we're gonna give the thirty-day extension into February. Um. I, I'm kind of, who made the motion and who seconded it?
I think Sierra seconded it.
Okay. All right, that's it. Okay, great. Thank you. So, all right. All right, so now we're, uh, moving on. So we're moving on to Battle Swamp Road. So Will Kernan's here and it looks like Brian's here too.
Hi, Will and Brian.
Russ.
Hey, Russ.
Uh, Rob and I went out and looked at this, um. Difficult site, but. Boy, it's a pretty one. Uh, and I, I don't know, Rob, I didn't, I didn't have any issues. Uh, but I, I have some questions. I think. I think where the house is going, surrounded by ledge, you're not planning to blast the hell out of the place. Thank you very much. Um, it's, it's a pretty, it's really nice lot. I, I hope you're happy there.
Oh, very much.
But. You'd be surprised because. You go there and for people who know Judge Bridge, where the bridge is, there's a little, uh, farm barn there. This is behind that. And it's up where there's all kinds of ledge and rock. And when I first got there and looked up from the barn, I'm like, how, how the hell are they gonna build up there? But. If, when you go up there, there's a natural driveway already in and they're, you know. Luckily, I brought Rob with me because he's a builder and he knows this stuff. And I, I said, could they put a house here? And he, he said, absolutely. So. I, I don't have a problem. It's not gonna affect the river. Uh, my question is, um. Are the tree, there, on this map. You have a proposed limit of disturbance. But standing there, aren't you gonna wanna cut some trees to have a view of the river?
Um, the, the tree, the tree cutting is gonna stop where the ledge drops off.
Okay.
Uh, cause we don't, we're, we're trying to maintain some sort of screen, uh, a seasonal screen there.
Okay. And then Brian, where the, where the driveway comes in, uh. You know, Battle Swamp is a nightmare for the town. Especially when we get those three-inch rainstorms that, as, uh. As Judy knows, living down there, um. Is, is there any drainage proposed?
Well, there's, uh, grassline swales on both sides of the driveway. It's a, it's a pretty short driveway.
Yeah.
Um, the overall length of the driveway is a hundred and sixty feet. Measured from the road, so it's relatively short driveway compared to most. Um. So yeah, there's, there's swales on both sides to, to take that water. Um. Again, it's, uh, it's a, it's a, um. Very small amount of actual development on the site itself. Most of it's gonna remain as woods.
But I'm talking about where the driveway meets the road. Is there over proposed a lot of water to continue to go through? Or I think all the water's on the other side of the road, right?
Yeah, most water's on the other side. Um, it, it come out pretty flat from the. From the roadway into the driveway. There's like a barway in there, an opening in the wall. Which is, um, you know, it's, it's relatively even grade in there. So we're not proposing a pipe, but again, most of the water's on the other side of, of Battle Swamp Road. Um, so we're not anticipating any problems with that. Um.
Okay, okay. Just, you know, I wanna ask these questions. Sometimes we approve these things and, uh. And, you know, right now, I'm having problems on Mallory Road with a driveway we approved that an engineer said. Would work and every time we get more than two inches, the driveway washes into the road and it's a, it's a danger, you know? So as long as you're comfortable and. Um, I have no issues with this application. Rob, do you have anything?
Well, I, I, I do have a couple of questions. One is, uh, like roof drainage. And, and driveway drainage, if, is there in, an increase in it? On this site? Is it creating an increase? It's going out onto Battle Swamp?
Well, as far as the house side goes, drainage kinda goes right straight down the hill. Um, I talked to Will about the idea of doing some kind of a roof drain system. It's pretty rocky there. We need to have some soil to put in some kind of an underground. System for, um, you know, for stormwater distribution, which is pretty tough on that side because of all the ledge. Um, it's, it's a relatively small house. The box is only, the main box is only twenty-five feet by thirty-six feet. It's got no. Attached garage.
So.
So I talked to Will about just basically letting the water come off the, the roof on both sides. Um, only because it, there's a, a difficult possibility of putting in some kind of an underground, you know, cistern or. Or a distribution system below the, you know, below the ledge.
So probably the water that's falling on this site right now is hitting the ledge and running off anyway. So.
It's running down the hill towards a barn. That's pretty much.
But I guess what I'm saying, it's not penetrating the ground to begin with, so it's not gonna, not really gonna matter.
Well, I think there's gonna be still some native vegetation between the, the development site and down the tunnel road. Um, it's a pretty good section of woods in between, which will, you know, tend to slow that water down and let it go back in the ground. But it is a pretty shallow ledgy area where the house side is. Um, in terms of septic, we ended up having to go down by the barn to find enough soil to put the, the septic leaching field in. Um. So and, and that's, that's a good spot. It's been approved by the health department, so that's, that's ready to go.
I, I have no problem with this. Plan.
Okay, I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve this as a non-regulated activity.
Second.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
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 Hey, thank you.
Kathy, I know you have to leave, so.
I am. I am leaving. The, the Zoom is gonna stay open, but I am leaving. So I, I, uh, so you can, I'm no longer voting number.
Okay. All right. And I don't need to seat anybody for Kathy because we have a quorum.
Yes.
Okay, what do we have here?
Okay, so we've got, um, we're going to New Business, sixty-five Minor Bridge Road, by Dewey. Construction of a single-family eight-bedroom home with sanitary system, well-grading driveway and others. Stuff. Um, so Spencer is here. For Arthur Holland, obviously.
Yep.
Hi, Spencer.
Hi, Russ again. Uh. I believe you've probably been on this site before. Um, I think they've, uh. Done some clearing previously that we were in front of the commission for. And they did on a separate lot out in front, they did some additional, uh, like a. Um, single-family house and garage. So that was a separate application. Um, this one is a new.
This is on the other side of the White House, the White Farmhouse?
Yeah, so if you drive down that, uh, existing driveway, that's what this is going to connect to. So if you go down past the white, uh, farmhouse. And, uh, we're proposing a new driveway that's going to come, come to the rear of the property. Um, down by the Shipog River, uh, Lake Lilimona there. Um. The driveway, septic system, the house is within the two-hundred-foot Shipog regulated area. Uh, the closest part of the house to the wetlands is a hundred and seven feet. And a hundred and twenty feet to the actual Shipog River for the, the closest corner there. Uh, most of it, uh, for the whole house is over a hundred feet away. Uh, some of the grading, uh, falls within a hundred feet of the Shipog River. We've got, uh, stone drainage, uh. Swales along the side of the driveway. We're collecting all the stormwater. Uh, putting it into stone infiltration trenches. Uh, same with the house, we're collecting that, uh, all the roof. Drainage and putting it into the ground as well in infiltration trenches. Stormwater is, um, based on the latest numbers from NOAA for, uh, one-hundred-year flood. Uh, twenty-four hour, which I think is like eight point seven inches. Um, of rain, uh, everything is oversized. And, uh, septic system will be a pump system further away from the Shipog River. Um, we have silt fence, uh, double silt fence and hay bale. Uh, going around the, uh, all the work. For the limit of disturbance, there are some trees that will be removed, um, on the.
Uh, what sheet is that?
SES sheet. I tried to give you a clean sheet, SES one. You can see the trees that are going to be, uh, removed. And that has all the silt fence as well on that sheet right there.
All right. We'll go look at it. Does anybody have any questions for Spencer before we go take a look? It's always good to. If you have a concern, let him know now so he could prepare that for the next meeting. But I know that's hard. Sometimes you gotta look at it first. So I'm just asking.
Uh, we'll be staking it out, uh, this week. Should be tomorrow, I believe. Um, so, uh, we'll be doing the centerline of the driveway, houses, septic system, stormwater trenches, house. And, uh, the limit of disturbance. If there's anything else you'd like, happy to, uh, have that done as well.
Okay, great. Thank you, Spencer.
Yep.
Okay, you're going back up to Stone Ledge, Sam? Up on Painter Hill Road, construction of single-family residents associated. Um, same thing, well-grading driveway, well, driveways in, um, so. Spencer's still up.
Um, uh, same thing. I, I believe, uh, Russ and Rob, you kinda saw the, the house site on your last site walk. For the pump house. Uh, it's in the same general area as the existing house complex, uh, which is the level spot on top of the. Uh, the hill there. Um. We are collecting all the stormwater from the roof again. And we have three different, uh, stormwater chambers. Again, sized for the hundred-year twenty-four-hour storm event. And, um, I think we, we increased that, overdesigned that as well by twenty percent. That's going into galleries, uh, for the best infiltration. Um, all that water that is, uh. Being collected is being infiltrated on the watershed side with the water course as well. So, uh, the water will continue to go where had previously. Um, and, uh, everything is located outside the hundred-foot regulated area. Uh, again, we have the double row of silt fence and hay bales. Uh, to protect the, the property and they are not, they really like to keep their trees. So they're looking to keep as many as possible.
Right, we saw that when we went up there. They planted a whole bunch of trees, so.
Yes, yes. He's all about gardens and plantings.
Uh, does anybody have any questions? Cause, cause this will wait till next meeting. Uh, we, we could have a site walk. Anybody who feels they need to see the site. Uh, to really, and, and you can look at the pump house at the same time. Uh, I could set that up. Uh, we could only go two at a time unless we, we call a meeting and we have a meeting up there, but it. It's always best not to do that because then the public could come and, and minutes have to be taken and all that stuff, so. Um, anybody who's interested could contact me and I, I will set people up to. I'll go up there. I'll work with, uh, Spencer or Paul and get us access. To just walk around. I, I think it'd be good for a lot of the commission to see this because, um. You, you really need to see it to understand it. Uh, and, and to see how things are set, uh, to make sure that we don't have any problems like we did with the driveway.
Hey, Spencer, I, I have just two questions. One is, uh, there was a house torn down up here, right? Big house?
Yeah, big house and I think it had some, uh, additional outbuildings as well that were, were removed.
Okay, so, so this, this complex here is probably no mu- no bigger than what was already existing up there?
I would say it, it's probably equivalent. It, it might be a little larger. Um, they did remove the pool and pool house as well, so that might balance out.
Okay. And then also, I was just thinking, what about, um. Directing the runoff and the stor- the, uh, roof drainage and everything into those storage tanks?
Ah. Ah, what an idea.
So, um. I don't have an answer for that. I will look up for that. My concern is typically when you really need all that storage for the tanks. And the irrigation, you don't have the storms and that's why you need the irrigation.
Right.
But I, I will definitely ask.
You know, this is augmented and I think your client might be, might be into that kind of idea. Sustainability is what it's called, as you know.
Yeah. Yeah, I will, uh, I'll bring that up.
Could you look into that, Spencer?
Oh, definitely, yeah. I'm writing it down, so we will have a response, a written response for you for the next meeting. Yeah, definitely.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
So we'll see you next meeting again.
Uh. Hopefully, Paul, but if not, I'll be here.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, um, Sue Fitch has joined the meeting. I don't know, Sue, can you hear us? I wanna make sure she has a mic and can hear us if you wanted to seat her.
Yeah, sorry, Julie, I was having a problem unmuted.
Oh, no, no, that's fine. So I, I've got you as coming in to the meeting, so I don't know. Russ, would you like to seat her?
Yes, uh, Rob and I went to see this, uh. I, I really don't have a problem. I, I don't know how Rob feels, but I don't have a problem with. They, they needed to get an excavator onto the site to dig per test. And, and, and all.
Okay, it looks like we may have lost Russ. Let's see if he can reconnect.
Julie, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
No, but what I was gonna say is when Russ comes back on, I don't think he heard about seating me, so.
No, I, I, I have a feeling, but it seems that. I am trying, I think Russ got bumped out, so that's just technical difficulties. We're just gonna hang tight and I'm. Know he'll come back in.
No problem, because I don't wanna continue the meeting.
Oh, I know, we gotta pick up with, uh, John Cody, so. Up, there's Russ.
Alright, who kicked me out?
Wow, talk, there you go, okay, so where are we?
Yeah, I got kicked out, I don't know why. So anyway, we see that they're gonna build a, a house and, and a, a pool and a yoga center, all right on, very close to the river. Um, but I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna judge that until I, and, until we, we see the app, apple, actual application. We did see a lot of stakes that said cut four feet here, uh, there's obviously gonna have to be some uh, some rock removal, ledge removal, I don't know whether that will be done by blasting or by, uh, just with a machine, uh, but, but we'll wait, we'll wait.
Russ, can I interrupt you for one minute, cause I don't know what application you're talking about?
Sue, you're in, I didn't, you're here?
Yeah, you, you dropped out for a while, Russ.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, and, and I don't know.
There's no, there's no, there's no application before us yet, there was a complaint that somebody crossed the stream and built a driveway. And there was no driveway built, the drive, the, it's an old, old road, old driveway, uh, he just he used this, Mr. Shemansky used this machine to cross a intermittent brook to dig perk test. And we, when we went out to inspect the NOV, we noticed a lot of flags, a lot of stakes and we could see that, uh, someday down the road, there's gonna be an application coming our way.
Hi, Mr. Dierenz, uh, this is John Carter, I think you're speaking, I didn't realize you're getting to my property now, but, um, I'm happy to help you in this conversation, to what extent, however extent you need it.
That's okay, I don't think the NOV, uh, is a big deal, is what I'm saying, do you agree, Rob?
Uh, no, I think, I think it was an existing roadway in there, um, you know, they did, uh, access over an intermittent stream. It's hard to tell right now, because the, the groundwater, the, uh, water is so high, so things are bleeding out everywhere.
Yeah, I could describe, I could describe that, what looks like the stream to you, if you like, in a little bit more detail, since I've lived with this thing for forty years, so I know it very well.
Sure.
Um, it's, it's typically very dry, as you know, the last year or two has been incredibly wet. So what happens is water running, running down, uh, Tunnel Road eventually comes down towards the place where you saw that we were entering the site. Um, and it, it runs down towards the river at that point and it gets quite wet there. And so at this moment in time, it does appear as if we're crossing a waterway. It never kind of felt that way in the past, cause typically it's dry enough that there, there is nothing that feels remotely like a waterway there, but it is a drainage spot, um, along Tunnel Road. And, uh, we, we merely accessed, it's, it is an old wood road, I suppose, of some kind, it was not very well used, and so I just used it as access into the site, because I, I am contemplating a house, which would obviously be brought before your commission, uh, as with a driveway, so I'm just here to assure you, there was nothing really, um, improper contemplated at all, it was merely access to cleanup brush, get access for the perk tests and other testing that, um, Howland, Arthur Howland's firm, your old Arthur Howland's firm is doing, to help us, uh, present to you what we want to do on the site.
Okay. Rob, you have any issues?
I, I don't have any issues with.
I don't have any issue. So I'm, I'm gonna make a motion to, uh, what's the word, uh?
Rescind?
Re, re, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna take back the notice of violation, so it's not on a property record. That's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
John, look forward to seeing your application in the future.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yep. Anything else Julie?
Um, no, just, I don't know if John Cody is going to review his report. Uh, other than that, um, you guys were slated to review the West Cog Wetlands Report, item seven through fourteen, but since Kathy stepped out, I don't know if you wanna.
She asked if we could put it off the next meeting and we can.
Okay, so I think you're all set then.
Alright, I'll make a motion to adjourn, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bye everybody.
Thank you.
One thing, one thing, um, I wanna welcome Chris Taggart to the commission. Chris, Chris, uh, expressed an interest. Um, I told him he needed to come to a meeting and if you're still interested, Chris, let Pat know and then the board of selectmen will put you on the commission vote. Chris, Chris serves on the zoning commission too, and, um, he's very active in town, uh, you, you're on the, uh, ambulance, right Chris?
No, no, I'm not on that, but, no.
Do you wanna be? We're looking for volunteers, anyway, but, uh, I, I welcome Chris to the commission and everybody to get to know Chris, uh, Chris, if you wanna do some sight walks with us.
I'd love to.
Just email me and, uh, and we'll get some sight walks, so you could see, you know, when you look at things in a map and then you go look at it, there, it's different, so.
Yep.
Do a lot of sight walks.
Great.
Alright, everybody, good night.
Good night.
No, I'll, I'll text you.
Good night.